Good evening. This is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, and it is six o'clock. We will start off with the roll call of the councilors.
Doug Glasbo.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
J. David Reed.
Present.
Jasmine Hemmenway. Anthony Russo is absent. All other city council members and our youth council representative are present.
All right, thank you. Our next item will be the Pledge of Allegiance, and Jasmine, our school council will start us off. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are not.
Okay. At this time, I will have a call for public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone who would like to speak for anything other than what's on the agenda this evening? And do we have anyone online? We have none. Seeing that, we will go to the next item. The next item, number six, is approval of the city council meeting on July twenty-first, a special city council meeting on February first, and a city council meeting on February second. Could I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two special city council meeting, the February first, two thousand and twenty-two regular city council meeting, and the February second, two thousand and twenty-two special city council meeting as presented.
Second. I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash oh-three. This is a resolution, "The City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado authorizing the filing of Community Development Block Grant application in order to fund economic development opportunities for persons of low and moderate incomes." This will be by Kendall Kramer.
Thank you, Mayor. And would you like to open the public hearing first, and then I'll read through everything that will be involved with applying for this?
Why don't we go through it first, and then I'll open it up if they have questions. That way they'll know.
Okay. That works. Thank you again, Mayor and city councilors, come before you today for your consideration of filing a resolution on behalf of Haven House of Montrose, Inc., with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs for a Community Development Block Grant. The city has been in conversation for at least the past two years regarding the proposed project. Alatha-based Haven House offers guidance, counseling, life skills training, and other services to help homeless families break the cycle of homelessness and dependency. In addition to providing safe and stable housing, Haven House offers a career development program to help participants become employable, stay employed, and pursue a career that provides a living wage. They also have a child development program with school-aged children that helps kids stay in school and helps them raise their academic performance and improve their behavior and values, as well as an early education program that prepares children for success in school. Haven's house, Haven House's services are addressing critical issues in our region, including housing for low-income individuals and homeless individuals, as well as underachieving school-aged children for the homeless and early childhood education scarcity. Haven House owns and owns property and seeks to expand its current facility at forty-eight oh-six North River Road in Alatha in order to continue providing services and assistance to the Montrose community and the surrounding region. They plan to construct a two-story, excuse me, a two-story, nine thousand two hundred square foot addition to their current facility. The first floor will provide space for an early education center, office space, and create four new transitional housing units for individuals and families seeking to end homelessness. The second floor will consist of eight low-income apartment units, or excuse me, apartments for participants who have graduated from Haven House's program. All living units will have access to the common areas, including a facility, excuse me, a commercial kitchen. They'll have refrigerator space, library, laundry, and visitation playroom. The expansion will enable the Early Childhood Education Center to accommodate up to thirty-five pre-kindergarten children while continuing to provide a forum for participants to become early childhood educators, which is a need in our region. Approximately eighty-five percent of the clients served by Haven House are from Montrose and Delta Counties. Since two thousand and sixteen, Haven House has housed four hundred and fifty people, seen one hundred and fifty-one participants graduate to self-sustaining lifestyles, and provided sixty-five thousand nights of shelter to the homeless population. The project cost is estimated at three point one million dollars. Matching funds will be met through funding requests through the Colorado Housing and Financing Authority, CHAFA, Colorado Division of Housing, Private Foundations Fundraising, and Haven House's Building Fund. The city has no cash obligation on behalf of Haven House for this project. However, the city will contribute staff time for grant administration, so no cash funds will go from the city for this project. In order to be eligible for CDBG, an applicant must meet the federal U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requirement of having fifty-one percent low-to-moderate income beneficiaries. Currently, ninety-five percent, at least ninety-five percent, of Haven House's clients are of low-to-moderate income means. No persons are anticipated to be displaced or relocated as a result of this project. It has been taking place, new construction on vacant land. The City of Montrose regularly partners with our nonprofit organizations to sponsor and administer Community Development Block Grant projects, which strengthen our community and region and serve vulnerable populations. If not for the CDBG program and support of the city, these projects may not happen. They would be, excuse me, they may be delayed or never pursued. As the fiscal sponsor of the grant, the City of Montrose commits to assisting with the environmental review, ensuring procurement aligns with CDBG requirements, submitting quarterly, annual, and final reports, and serving as a liaison with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. Recent CDBG grants have been secured for the Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club, Center for Mental Health, and Maslow Academy. Excuse me. The City of Montrose and Haven House shall enter into an agreement for the provision of CDBG funding if an award is given. Haven House has notified DOLA, the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, Montrose County, the town of Alatha, and Delta of their intent to, of its intent to apply for this funding. All three have provided letters of support for this project application. So the resolution before you tonight states that if the grant is awarded, that it authorizes the city manager to execute the grant, as well as city staff to act on behalf of the grant. It states that we will follow all CDBG guidelines and regulations and provide information as requested by DOLA. And the application is on file with with me at the visitor's center, but you can also go head over to City Hall, and they'll contact me as well, Monday through Thursday, seven a.m. to six p.m. As part of this, as part of applying for the grant, a public hearing is required to take public comments, and that will happen this evening. And if you have any questions, please let me know. We also have Larry Frederickson, excuse me, Larry Frederickson, the president of Haven House here this evening, if you have any questions for him as well.
All right. Barbara, do you have any questions?
I do not.
David? David? In that case, we will open a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak to this item? And do we have anyone online? Excuse me, we do have one here. Please state your name and your address.
Larry Frederickson. I'm a resident of Ridgeway, Colorado, five-six-two Marmot, Ridgeway, Colorado. I just want to express my appreciation to the city council for facilitating this application. It's a fundamental cornerstone of our financing package. Without this, it's doubtful that we'd be able to put together what we need to fund the project. And it means a lot to Haven House, and it means a lot to the people that we serve that will be able to provide the services that Kendall mentioned, and especially the low-income housing that will provide an essential bridge for the graduates of a transitional program towards into this low-income housing as a stepping stone to affordable market rents. So, thank you for your consideration.
Well, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? In that case, I'll close the hearing. Are there any other questions for staff? And I will consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash oh-three as presented.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Next item is Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash four, City Council Consideration Authorizing the Police Department to Go For a Grant. Chief Hall, would you please describe this to us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Tonight I come before you requesting authorization for the City of Montrose, Montrose Police Department, to file for a Victims of Crime Act grant through Colorado Department of Public Safety. We did talk about this in work session previously, but to summarize, the grant totals sixty-five thousand dollars and funds half of our Victims Services position, which is a statutorily required position for all law enforcement agencies in the state of Colorado. It also funds a vehicle for our Victims Services person to be able to respond to crimes that she's required to respond to. The grant does require a match from the City of Montrose totaling sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars over a two-year period, and certainly happy to answer any questions you may have, but that's what we're asking here tonight.
All right. Barbara, do you have any questions? David?
Chief, for clarification, this is a grant we apply for pretty much every year or every two years. This is nothing new. This is a kind of a cornerstone of our Victims Assistance Programs, and that we really rely on this money, and it's a very good program.
Yes, we've we've applied for this grant over a two-year period for the last fifteen years. It commingles with a grant that we apply for through the state of Colorado, and these two grants together fund our Victims Services program at a hundred percent. So it's critical that we we receive these funds, and so we do apply for it every two years.
David, do you have anything? In that case, is there any public comment? All right, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-four as presented.
Second. I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that that passes unanimously. Our next item is item number nine. It's an ordinance twenty-five sixty-three on first reading. It's an ordinance for the City of Montrose, Colorado, and it'll be presented by our Assistant City Attorney, Matthew Magliaro.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council and members of the public, present person as well as on Zoom. I'm here on a proposal to extend the citywide moratorium on adult gaming arcade uses, which is currently due to expire March twentieth of this year. This proposal, if adopted, would extend until September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, expiring and auto repealing the first minute of September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Second, I'm also here to ask this council for express authority directing staff to communicate a formal request to the Office of the Attorney General for the State of Colorado to obtain a formal written AG opinion or at least written guidance from that Office's Revenue Section on the legality of the gaming devices and mechanics of play on offer to the public by the adult gaming arcade establishments under Colorado law, and whether a home rule municipality may lawfully enact a ban by ordinance and co-regulate in this area of the state. A clean version of the proposal appears on pages fourteen through twenty-three of tonight's session packet, and a red line appears on pages twenty-four through thirty. I just want to take us through kind of a summary of the procedural posture of where we're at with with this, and then I'm prepared to ask or answer any questions the council may have. Council took up the moratorium on September twentieth during a recorded work session, and again the following day, September twenty-first, when it passed Emergency Ordinance twenty-five sixty. That imposed a one-hundred-and-eighty-day moratorium on new or relocating adult gaming arcade uses. The record made at those hearings, you'll note, is expressly incorporated into declarations for the ordinance and proposal before you tonight. That's on pages fifteen of the session packet. The purpose of the temporary moratorium is to afford city staff time to evaluate the uses. At that time, there were four businesses in operation around Montrose, as well as to coordinate with our law enforcement partners around the state, which is still an ongoing effort. I can advise council that, to staff's knowledge, two of these businesses have now closed. One went fully out of business. That was Mad Skills Gaming Center at ten-ten South Cascade, number A, and one may have relocated out of the city limits, some information, believe possibly out of the county. That is, the Tap In Adult Skills Gaming of North First Street. Two remain. That's the Spin and Win, ten-ten South Cascade, C, and then Gone Fishing, which is one-six-three-six-seven South Townsend Avenue. As discussed, in answer to a question at work session held early prior this year, city staff has done outreach in this area in conjunction with this project. City staff, including myself, have reached out to the district attorneys, Mr. Ryan with the Office of the District Attorney, Southern Social District, with agents, and later in a conference call with the head of the Colorado Department of Revenue, Limited Gaming Division. I've also spoken with the senior AG in charge of that section with the Department of Revenue. There is a public safety attorney list served within CML. I've spoken with that group, those attorneys that do the similar function to me around the state. I've also spoken twice to Dave Broadwell before he retired as the CML General Counsel related to this proposal and the issues presented by this sort of activity. In addition to that, I've spoken with my counterparts in Grand Junction, as well as in Delta, about their experiences with similar, or the same conduct. In addition, we've spoken with the attorney and the Colorado Gaming Association, which is a statewide trade association nonprofit that represents the interests of the authorized commercial casino industry in Central Black Hawk and Purple Creek. Part of the proposal tonight is to allow a potential statewide legislation. The Gaming Association, the latter organization I just mentioned, was interested this session in partnering potentially with CML to to run some legislation statewide. In speaking with them this week, some attention from that was drawn away to an effort, introduction of a proposed alternative bill, a bingo raffle bill that drew some of their attention away from from that project, but nonetheless, staff would like to see what shakes out the current legislative session, what, if anything, is brought in topic, and also, we would like some indirection in form of an opinion from the AG office in this matter. I spoke with the senior AG that's in charge of this section, or oversees the limited gaming section today. He indicated that that's not a quick process. Often, it takes about as long as what we're requesting here tonight to get a response. In addition to what's before you, there's also a modification proposed to some of the definition section. There's a repeal and replace provision. Emergency Ordinance twenty-five sixty, if you recall, added five definitions to our code. That was within four dash fourteen dash one, which was an existing section within our Adult Business Regulations Chapter. Four defined terms were added by that that were near verbatim from state law. And a fifth definition, adult gaming arcade, was drafted by this office internally by heavy resource to state law definitions of slot machines within the Colorado Constitution, as well as state statute, and simulated gambling device. We have modified that definition of adult gaming arcade, in part, in this core proposal before you this evening, to include potential considerations virtual currency. We've also drafted a language intended to more closely capture the conduct of the adult gaming arcade businesses, and we've also added an exclusion that's drawn from state law on vintage slot machines. The term prize is also added here. That's, again, verbatim drawn from state law definition in eighteen-ten-point-five-one-zero-two. So that's the proposal before you this evening. Does council have any questions?
Barbara, anything? Dave? David? Jasmine, are you the council? Have you got any questions on this?
I did want to point out that both Senator Coram and Representative Catlin have been very active on this, as well as the CML staff, in trying to get this legislation clarified and pushed through on a state level.
Any other questions? If not, we will open a hearing. And is there anyone that wants to speak to this item? I see none in the audience, no one online. In that case, we'll close the hearing, and I will consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass Ordinance twenty-five sixty-three on first reading as presented.
And a second?
Second thought.
All right, I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item ten, ordinance twenty-five seventy-seven on first reading. This is council consideration of this ordinance. It's for Title VI, Chapter one, miscellaneous offenses. Mr. Magliaro, would you give us information on this one also?
Thank you. Good evening again. I'm here on a proposal tonight to repeal one discrete provision of the Montrose Criminal Ordinances in Title VI, Chapter one, Section twenty-seven. The proposal basically seeks to break this section apart, the existing ordinance apart, to add a new Section six-one-twenty-six underage tobacco and paraphernalia possession, and repeal and replace six-one-twenty-seven underage marijuana and drug paraphernalia. A red line version appears on pages forty-one through forty-eight of today's session packet, a clean version on thirty-three through forty, an introductory memo appears on thirty-one through thirty-two of today's packet. It covers in summary most of the kind of basics of the proposal and the rationale. This was discussed at a work session on January third and then brought back at the session January thirty-first. There have been no changes made to the proposal since the January thirty-first presentation to this body. The technical edits, just in summary, we're breaking, are proposed to break this apart in two sections, and we're codifying these to follow a division, kind of a pattern order, describing the memo. That was first, a listing of the substantive crimes by subsection A and subsection B to keep things simple, because we were having issues with the citation, proper citation done in court. So underage tobacco possessions, A, the paraphernalia would be B, and then the other ordinance would follow the same pattern, A and B. Definitions now rearranged in alphabetical order, and then delineated penalty sections for the substantive crimes listed with a subheading, so the court and council doesn't have to hunt for them within the ordinance. A substantive edits, we did take a look and and discuss at length at work session, House Bill two thousand and twenty thousand-one, which did pass in July of two thousand and twenty, that raised the age of minority to those, applying basically to those under twenty, age twenty-one from age eighteen. So our ordinance is intended to follow suit. And with that, I think this also makes that a secondary offense, so one thing to add on the intent of this section, specifically Sub F of six-one-twenty-six, is to make the violations of this ordinance when it deals with folks driving a car on the road, a secondary violation for traffic vehicle stops and not a primary violation. What that means is basically, it wouldn't justify on its own the police pulling over a vehicle. It would justify, but if they were pulled over for another offense, say a traffic violation or running a stoplight, for example, it could be cited. It's similar language drawn from the intended to parallel the seatbelt statute in state law, which is also a secondary violation. So that's what it meant there. Beyond that, I, this was discussed pretty heavily at a work session, and I'll take any questions if council has them.
All right. Barbara, any questions? Good.
I just wanted to point out for the public that this is, the reason it came to two work sessions is because we had a lot of linguistic issues that we wanted to make sure were really very, very specific as far as the revision of this, and I think Mr. Magliaro has done a fantastic job of responding to all of our input and suggestions and bringing us a document that is both cohesive and logical. Thank you very much.
David, anything? All right, thank you. And this item will hold a hearing on it. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak to this? Anybody online? We have none? In that case, I'll close the hearing, and I would consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass Ordinance twenty-five seven-seven on first reading as presented.
Seconded. I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item number eleven, ordinance twenty-five seventy-nine on first reading. This is an item on the Yocum Edition.
While we get set up over here, I'll just mention that Ms. Sharp is out of the office this week unexpectedly on bereavement leave, and so William Reese will be presenting this item in her absence.
All right. And this item, number ten, I believe that.
Eleven.
Eleven, I'm sorry. Mr. Reed is going to recuse himself.
I need to recuse myself due to the fact that I represent the owner applicant of the property.
All right, thank you.
We'll give Mr. Reed time to get all the way to the coffee shop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council. So, as you know, this is an application to rezone a property from R-two low-density district to R-three-A medium-high-density district. This map here shows the general vicinity of the property. It's located adjacent to Ogden Road and across from the intersection with Kelly Drive. The property is approximately seven-point-three acres in size. As I mentioned, this application is to rezone the Yocum Edition from R-two to R-three-A medium-density district. The purpose of this application is for future development of multifamily housing. The property is located adjacent to other R-three-A zoning and R-two zoning, as well as property outside of the city limits. So when we receive rezone applications, we review them for compliance with Section four-four-twenty-nine of our municipal code. Amendments to the official zoning map shall be allowed only upon findings as follows. The amendment is not adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare, and the amendment is in substantial conformity with the master plan or conditions in the area affected or adjacent areas have changed materially since the area was last zoned. The proposed district of R-three-A medium-high-density district is intended to provide an area which is suitable for single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily residences with intermediate overall density. This district provides for other uses which are compatible with such residential uses. According to our comprehensive plan, this area is in the residential mixed-density-low district, which provides primarily for single-family homes, as well as small amounts of attached residential dwelling units, such as duplexes and small groups of townhomes. We also look at some of the goals and objectives within our comprehensive plan. For our land use goals, we want to promote higher-density infill and redevelopment of underutilized sites, and support development in areas that can be easily accessed by foot, bike, and/or public transit. This property is located adjacent to the city's trail systems, which go from the rec center to the Colorado outdoors, and it's within walking distance to public services and public transit. Our housing and neighborhood goals are to encourage a variety of housing types, tenure, and density, and to meet the needs of the community, including single-family homes on a variety of lot sizes, multifamily housing, townhomes, apartments, senior housing, and transitional housing, and encourage mixed-density neighborhoods. Of course, we also want to encourage a mix of housing price ranges, thereby providing choices for residents of all incomes and ages, and support and work with housing agencies, organizations, private developers, and businesses to increase the amount of workforce housing. As I mentioned, we do look at changed conditions since the time the areas were previously zoned. The adjacent Montrose Community Recreation Center is obviously a big change, and the connections to the trail systems and vicinity to public transit and public services all support the proposed rezone. City staff has found that the proposal meets the rezone criteria in Section four-four-twenty-nine A. The proposal meets the intent for the R-three-A medium-high-density district. It's compatible with both our comprehensive plan's goals and objectives, and as well as the existing uses in the surrounding area. The Planning Commission recommended approval on January twenty-sixth of this year, and city staff recommends the approval of the rezone. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant. They did send me some slides, and I will pull those up shortly.
All right. Sir, if you would, please state your name and address.
Mike Serak, eighty-two-fifty Dean Road, Indianapolis, Indiana. I have a printout of the slides.
Who are you betting on in this year's race?
Sorry?
Who are you betting on in this year's race?
I don't know that answer yet. Thank you for your time. My name is Mike Surack, I'm a development associate with Real America Companies. As mentioned, thank you, William, for going over what we're doing here tonight. I wanted to give you just a brief overview of Real America Companies, what we do, our plans for this property, and although it is preliminary at this point, but just our intended use eventually, so thank you for your time. Real America Companies was founded on developing affordable housing, and we've been doing so for over 26 years. Development company was started and shortly after, the management company was created to manage our properties, so we are hands-on in the day-to-day operations, ensuring that the residents and the communities are managed appropriately and efficiently. Real America Construction was created shortly thereafter to be the general contractor in all of our developments, to be involved in every aspect of the project development stages, and then Real America Design was shortly created thereafter to be deeply involved in the design and architectural components to every project. We have built over 40 residential multifamily developments with 2,800 units total. You can see our figures there for construction and development, and we're proud of our occupancy to be over 98% throughout our portfolio. Our core competency, our core business is affordable housing and market rate housing, but we have, we have done other development as well as that come, you know, as an opportunistic play, if you will, so we've done some self-storage, some historic renovation of industrial buildings or former hotels that we've converted into housing, and we've done some medical office as well. Here's just a sample of some of the properties that we have in our portfolio currently. I'll show you one in particular on the next slide is, so we are based in Indiana, most of our portfolio and development has been in Indiana. We did open up Roaring Fork Apartments in Basalt, Colorado in 2018, which is actually a similar development to what we will be planning to do here. It's a mixed income development with 56 apartments. 12 of those units are market rate, as you can see here. We build to the same standard that we build our market rate developments, so they have very similar amenities, curb appeal, finishes that you would find in any other market rate development community. In addition to Roaring Fork Apartments, we're currently getting, are getting ready to break ground on another 40-unit development in Glenwood Springs, and we're also doing a smaller development in Stonehouse Village as well. So that brings us to this property here, the name of this residence is at Dry Cedar Creek, and although this is preliminary, I wanted to at least give you an overview of what our intended use is here. And William gave an overview of the site already, but there's many reasons why we were drawn to this location. Access to public transportation, there's three bus stops within, very short walking distance, obviously being adjacent to the rec center, is a very nice added amenity to a residence, being within short walking distance to three grocery stores, including the Walmart right there, a wealth of employment and retail opportunities, as well as healthcare as well, which is one reason why I really, really liked this site. And then for the property itself, hence the name Dry Cedar Creek, there is a Dry Cedar Creek that runs through it horizontally. I just wanted to give this as an overview of what our intended use is here. Access would be coming in off of Ogden Road, so that's the development area that you see there. That's where we would be doing two residential buildings and then one standalone clubhouse building, leaving the area to the south open. This is again, a preliminary layout of the property, two, three-story buildings and one standalone community building. We would intend to put in a playground, dog park, other amenities, bike covered, bike parking, we would have indoor storage in the community building, computer, meeting room, and you'll see a list of, a sample of some of these amenities on the next slide. This is, so, in order to make the project financially feasible, we do submit an, we did submit an application to CHAF, Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, to, an application for federal tax credits. And so the proposed unit mix that we submitted to CHAF is 12 one-bedroom units, 36 two-bedroom units, 12 three-bedroom units, and a range of affordability, so 60 at 30% of the area median income, those would be the lowest rental units, 21 at 50% of the area median income, 27 at 60%, and then six market rates. So this would be a mixed income development. And as I said, that standalone community building would be there as well. The images there are actually from Roaring Fork in Basalt. We do put in a pet wash station, we do find that a lot of the residents typically have dogs, and it's been very popular there. We have an indoor bike storage room, we have a fitness center, which we would intend on doing here as well. Every unit would have a balcony or patio, and they are open concept floor plans. In addition to the community building, we would have patio with a grill area, and then something that we had talked about is, and we've actually got a letter of support from the Montrose Rec Center, potentially creating some sort of outdoor amenity area in the southern portion of that open space of the property as an added amenity for residents. Do you want to continue? This is a preliminary rendering. We have built this style building before, and it's something that has been very well received and popular with our residents, so this is just an example of what the building could potentially look like. Again, this is the same building type that I mentioned, these are actual images, we would have covered outdoor bicycle parking, playground. So as a part of our application to CHAF, we did get a market study done, and like what we have heard from many people around the Montrose community, housing is a very, very important need in the community, and actually there's zero vacant apartments throughout the whole market. And so, there's clearly a demand, there's definitely a demand for people at a range of affordability levels, so these are people that work in your schools, work in your hospitals, you know, serve you, your lunches at, you know, local restaurants, and so these are true, you know, workforce housing units for people that support the community. And as a part of the tax credit compliance, compliance period is there's very detailed income verification, employment verification, and so it's a very well-run program that's been around for a while, and we're very diligent in, you know, how we manage them in our compliance So with that, we did hold a community meeting at the rec center on January 13th. We held it in an open house format, so people could come over a two-hour period. We brought posters of the slides that you saw today, we wanted to answer questions, we wanted to listen to what the neighbors would have to say. There was a lot of, a lot of feedback that housing is a very important issue that needs to be addressed in Montrose, and so it was reassuring to hear that. In addition to this, we have received a wealth of support from the community. We've gotten a letter of support from the rec center, as I mentioned, a larger employer, Alpine Lumber, wrote a letter of support, River Valley Community Options wrote a letter of support, the Montrose Housing Authority, who we're working closely with and who will actually be providing six project-based vouchers for this development, wrote a letter of support, and then the Montrose Economic Development Corporation wrote a letter of support addressing unfilled positions at hospitals and schools, and how it's hard to have some employers hire people when there aren't, isn't adequate housing available. And so as William said earlier, this is just a summary of how the project aligns with the comprehensive plan to promote housing of all sorts and higher density infill locations. So we think that this, this location, this development is very much in alignment with that. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and again, appreciate your time.
All right. Barbara, do you have any questions?
Dave? Actually, I've got a couple. You brought up Cedar Creek and putting the recreation area on the other side, you going to put a bridge across Cedar Creek?
That's not our intention at this point, no.
Okay. And the other question is, with the rezoning for the higher density, will the soil composition there in that area support the style and size of structure you're trying to put in?
We did get a Phase 1 report done, and there was no issues revolving contamination. We will be getting Geotac done as well, but we do believe that it will support the development, yes.
Great, thank you.
Did you have, do you have any idea how much turnout you had when you had the public meeting?
There was about, I think there's 27 people that turned out.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Jasmine, do you have any questions? In that case, I'll hold a public hearing. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak to this issue? Anyone online? Seeing none, I will close the hearing. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, we'll open hearing back up. Please come up, state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Atta Renfro, 3241 Hollyway, Montrose, Colorado. I'd like to express my approval or satisfaction with the, with the Real America development, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, is there anyone else? In that case, I'll close the hearing again, and I would take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance 2579 on first reading as presented.
Second.
All right, please vote, I have a motion and a second. That passes with one abstention. Thank you very much. Ordinance 2578 on first reading. This is a ordinance on Title IV, Chapter 15, a historic preservation rule, and that is Will Rice. Reese, get that right there.
Second time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll wait for Councilman Reed to sit down.
Well, we can't read it.
I'm sorry, I just said, "thank you."
Good.
So we had previously talked about this during work session, but for the benefit of the public, I'll briefly go over it again. This is a code amendment that's being done in light of the appointment of an alternate member to the Historic Preservation Commission. To be clear, this is not a change to existing practice, but rather serves to codify the process and clarify if that's necessary for the future. This change is to Section 415-2 of our municipal code. Subsection B reads as follows. "Composition: The commission shall be composed of seven voting members, all of who have demonstrated interest in, competence with, or knowledge of preservation." And then the proposed code change would add the following language. "The council may appoint alternate Historic Preservation Commission members in the same manner as regular appointments. The alternate Historic Preservation Commission members may be called to sit on the commission and vote as a member thereof on account of the absence of any regular member." So this code amendment doesn't strike anything from the existing code. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right, Barbara, any questions?
David?
I would like to point out that this, as I recall, was a request of the council to add that alternate position.
Yes, correct.
All right. In that case, I will open a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to speak to this? Anyone online? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass Ordinance Number 2578 on first reading as presented.
And a second? I have a motion, a second, please vote. Item 13 is Historic Preservation Commission bylaws. And Will Reese, are you going to handle that one also?
Yes, I think I can handle it.
Thank you.
So this is in the same vein as the previous amendment, however, this is a change to the HPC bylaws. Again, this is just adding language to the bylaws, specifically Section 48, meetings of the commission. The proposed section reads as follows. "No official business of the commission shall be conducted unless a quorum is present. The presence of four commissioners in the case of a seven-member commission at any meeting shall constitute a quorum for transacting business and taking official action for all matters. The concurring vote of a quorum is necessary to constitute an official act of the commission. Alternates shall assume the seat of any commissioner in their absence or disability, and so seated shall be counted towards a quorum. Alternates are ex officio at meetings and may contribute to discussion but may not cast a vote or make or second a motion unless they assume a vacant commissioner's seat, in which the case they are required to cast a vote and may make or second a motion." And so since this is a bylaw amendment, the process is a little different. We brought this to the Historic Preservation Commission last month, and they voted to make a recommendation to City Council for approval. Since this is an amendment to the bylaws, this would not go to a second reading, and this would be approved or denied tonight. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right. Barbara, any questions?
David?
I would accept any public comment. Is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to make a comment on this? Seeing none, I would request a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the Historic Preservation Commission bylaws as presented.
Second? I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item number 14, Ordinance 2580 on first reading. And again, this is going to be Will Reese.
Thank you once again. We're very excited that we have an application for a historic designation tonight. This is in regards to the SHNI building, which is located at 428 East Main Street. In looking at the building's eligibility, it's well over 50 years old, and is also eligible due to Criteria A, B, and C. This building is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to history, it's connected with persons significant in history, and its architecture shows the characteristics of a tight-period method of construction or artisan. SHNI comes from Samuel Huntington Nye, who was born in Pittsburgh, New York in 1848. He moved to Colorado when he was an adult, and he was one of the earliest settlers in the Unco Pogre Valley. He homesteaded a 160-acre parcel about two miles south of what is now Olathe, and he's credited with being one of the first people to grow fruit trees in Montrose County. In 1883, when Montrose County was first formed, then-Governor James Grant appointed Nye as one of the first three county commissioners on March 12th. Nye married Isabel Hannah Redmond in 1893, and they sold their farm in 1906. At that time, they moved to the city of Montrose, to 701 South First Street, a home that no longer exists today. In January of 1909, Nye purchased two lots on Main Street from the Odd Fellows for $6,560. John Antrimus was the architect, and he designed a 50-foot by 125-foot two-story building. The contract went to W.C. Boyer and Charles Hawkins of Grand Junction. The upstairs was planned to include a room for the Central Business College and rooms for the U.S. Land Office. Contract was signed in April of 1909, water lines were in place by May, and excavations for the foundation by June. The building was the first building to use bricks from the new Buckley plant here in Montrose. And so this shown on screen here is a picture of the building under construction in 1909. The original contract stated that construction was to be complete by September 1st, but some orders for materials were delayed and the building wasn't finished until February of 1910. You may notice, if you ever look at the signs along Main Street, that the one across from the Nye building gives a construction date of 1908. Based on my research, I believe that is incorrect. The Central Business School moved in in 1910, and the first floor was occupied by the Denver Music Company for the first year. The use on the first floor changed many times in that early history, included a Studebaker Chevrolet and Oldsmobile dealership, clothing, grocery stores, et cetera. That floor was also used for art exhibits, Red Cross drives, a World War I relief drive, meetings for the Montrose Republican Party, and church events. The U.S. Land Office occupied the top floor from 1912 until 1920, and some of the other spaces upstairs were used as a temporary high school, a bowling alley, doctor's offices, et cetera. On May 4th, 1919, there was a fire that started in the U.S. Land Office at 1:05 a.m. The fire department was right next door, so the damage was limited to only about $300 worth of land office paperwork. Samuel Nye was a member- Samuel Nye was a member of the Union Congregational Church, and when his wife passed away on September 19th, 1919, he donated the building to the church as an endowment for a church gymnasium in honor of Bell Nye. Samuel Nye passed away on April 13th, 1922. In anticipation of building a new church, the Congregational Church sold the building to James A. Dutcher Jr. and Thomas L. Dutcher in 1964, with the proceeds going towards the construction of the Hillcrest Congregational Church. The building stayed with the Dutcher family until 2018, when it was sold to Kelly &amp; John Stewart, and then sold in December of last year to Twan &amp; Vivian Hong. This map here shows the Sanborn Fire Insurance Map from 1912, and this is the earliest map that we have with the building included. And then, this is the 1919 map. Worth noting, in the rear of the building, you may notice, there's evidence of an exterior iron staircase and a brick addition in the back of the alley. Both of those have since been removed. Unfortunately, most of the historical photographs that we have of the building look like this, where it's far away and off to the side. This picture is from 1915, and the building's on the right side of the street. When you zoom in, you can see some of the architectural features. It's a little blurry, just because it's, you know, far away from the photograph. But you can see the second stories divided into two bays and a little bit of the parapet on the top. You can still see those today. This here is a picture from 1919, and this shows when Main Street was first being paved. The Nye Building is on the left here, behind that contraption. And when you zoom in, you can see the stone cornice, which is supported by the scroll brackets. And so, looking at the modern architecture, the modern photographs, so this is obviously the front of the building. It features that same yellow and orange brick that's common for a lot of the other historical buildings in downtown Montrose. Notice the stone coping and paneled parapet with the stone plaques that read SHNI Building. Below that is the stone cornice, which is supported by scroll brackets. The second story is divided into the two bays, each with four double-hung sash windows with transoms. The windows have lintels of gauged brick with stone keystones and rock-faced stone sills with a dentil course below. The storefronts on the first floor have been heavily modified. On the southwest side of the building, you can see the stepped parapet on the roof. And then, there is a, it's kind of camouflaged, so it's hard to see, but if you look very closely, there is the evidence of a former additional window just to the right of the last window in that row. And then, below that last window, you can see the evidence of a former sill, which is just a little bit below the edge. Rear of the building has been pretty heavily altered, and little to no historical characteristics remain. And then, finally, on the northeast side, this retains the yellow and orange brick from the front. Also noticed the mirrored step of parapet and the stone sills and arched lintels of the windows. So, in conclusion, staff finds that the SHNI building meets all eligibility and integrity criteria. This building is significant for its association with SHNI, a prominent Montrose rancher, businessman, and civic leader, and for its association with the development of downtown Montrose in the early 20th century. It houses stores and offices. The building, although altered, is representative of the 20th-century commercial style and its brick construction, restrained ornament, double-hung sash windows with transoms on the upper story, and large storefronts on the lower story. Staff recommends approval for historic designation of the SHNI building. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Barbara?
That research is really impressive. Thank you so much for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Yes, that was great. That building's been here longer than I have. Jasmine, do you have any questions on this one? All right. In that case, I would hold a hearing. Is, open a hearing, is there anyone here who would like to speak to this? Do you have anyone online? None? I will close the hearing, and I would consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2580 on first reading as presented.
Second? I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item number 15, I believe that you're going to recuse yourself.
Mr. Mayor, I will recuse myself as I represent the proposed contractor in this matter.
All right. We're going to allow you 15 minutes to get out of sight, I was there. All right, the next item on our agenda this evening is item 15. This is the Buckley and Lyons Park Irrigation Replacement Contract. Jim Scheid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, yeah, the recommendation I have for you tonight is to allow us to install a new irrigation system in Buckley and Lyons Park. So, the existing system was installed in the 80s. It was comprised of a couple of different systems, two different pump houses, and it serves about 10 acres total, but in a pretty complex layout and strung out through the Paso de la Río area, with hundreds of trees scattered throughout the park, so it makes the irrigation system quite complex. And then, over the last 40 years, you know, the materials used in the system have aged quite a bit. The trees have grown significantly and caused the system to be quite problematic. And our crews over the last several years have spent a lot of time keeping that park alive, so, over the last couple of years, we've been working on design of a new system there, in which we completed that last year. And a lot of design work was done in-house to get it designed ready for construction in this year. And the system was designed to be very similar to what we have in Srees Park. Again, it's similar in size, but the control systems and the pump system would be very similar to what we use there. And because of the complexity of the system, there is quite an impact on the existing tree system that's in the park due to this project. And because we're aware of that, and we're trying to be ahead of that as far as replacing trees that will be impacted, many of the trees that are right in line with the new system are in decline anyway, and probably need to be removed as part of a replacement system anyway. And so, we're trying to be cognizant of that as we start to install a new system, but we will be replacing trees there as needed. As far as bidding on this project, we only received one bid, and it was from a well-respected local contract that we have a very positive relationship with. We're able to work with them and discuss pricing, and kind of get to the bottom of how their pricing differs from our estimates in budgeting. We were, we put a budget estimate this last year. And so, we're able to work through the details of the discrepancies that we're seeing, definitely material pricing, PVC is one example of that, and specialty work, in this case, is boring. Those are the two things that are different from our estimate, and a lot of the other things that we assumed in our estimate last year were the same in their proposal. And that, I didn't mention, this is Stryker &amp; Company is the contractor that we're recommending awarding this to. So, as far as the PVC material, it's actually very hard to procure right now because they will only hold pricing for up to seven days. And that's from the material supplier, not even really the local vendors that are acquiring that. In our case, we were able to hold pricing through February 15th to, for this project, and it's because of that local supplier did have a lot of the supplies needed on hand. So, with that, nothing else has changed since we discussed this at work session, and so we are recommending awarding this to Stryker &amp; Company for a total of $802,073.74, and that does include a 10% owner's contingency. But I would be happy to answer any questions there may be.
Barbara? I would like to point out too, Jim, this not only is the two parks, it is the pathway between the two parks along the Aurora.
That's right, yep.
So, that adds some additional distance to it.
Yeah, it's about 10 acres, all of those combined, but in quite a complex layout. You know, where Srees Park, for example, is similar size, but is in a big, open, rectangle area, and this is not, so it's definitely more complex.
Jasmine, do you have any questions? All right. In that case, I would open it up for any public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak to this? Seeing none, we have none online, then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to award a contract to Stryker &amp; Company Incorporated in the amount of $802,073.74 for the Buckley Lyons Irrigation Replacement Project as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. That passes unanimously with one abstention. The next item on our agenda, staff reports. This is sales use and excise tax report. Our financial director, Shani Whitberg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Sorry, I thought there was another item before mine, so I apologize. Give me one second to connect so I can share my screen. And am I promoted? All right. So, sorry about the November report. That was a mishap. I'm not sure exactly what happened, but joining from home and sharing my screen did not work. So, this is the December report. There wasn't really anything that was huge in the November report, too. It's pretty much been the same all year long. You'll see in this report, there's a couple of negatives, but all in all, we did really well for sales and use tax collections in 2021. So, with that, this report finishes out 2021. We collect sales tax, sales and use tax at 3%. Retail sales tax for December compared to December of 2020 was up 15.4%. Construction use tax down 6.8%. Use and auto-use tax down 14.1%, with total collections up 12.5% and a positive budget variance of 17.8%. Year-to-date retail sales taxes up 18.8% or $3.3 million. Construction use tax was up 35.5% or 226, that's supposed to be $1,000, I guess that's what that does say. Use and auto-use taxes up 18.5% or $241,000, with a total collection up of 19.3% or $3.8 million. A positive budget variance of 26.6% or almost $5 million. In November of 2020, November 5th, 2019, effective January 1st, 2020, was the public safety sales and use tax, 0.58% was voted by the constituents. And in December, we collected $468,663, or 23.8% more than we did in December of 2020. Total collections, $4,670,058, or 22.5% more than we did in 2020. Budget variance positive of 34.4% or $1.2 million. Montrose Recreation District, we're collecting 0.3% for them. That was also a vote back in 2014. And in December, we collected $242,410, or 11.8% more than we did in December of 2020. Year-to-date collections, $2,383,960, or almost 20% more than we did year-to-date in 2020. Excise taxes, hotel excise tax adds 0.9%, restaurant excise tax adds 0.8% to our total sales tax. And in December, everything was green, so hotel excise tax up 36%, restaurant up 23.7% with total collections up 25.2% and a budget variance positive of 26%. Year-to-date collections, hotel excise taxes up 42.4% or $41,000. Restaurant excise tax up 24% or $110,000, with total excise tax up 27.3% or $151,000. A positive budget variance there of 29.2 or $159,000. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that the vendors voted to give up so that Montrose could do advertising for them and promotions. In December, we collected $58,625, or 15.2% more than we did in 2020. Year-to-date collections, $558,045, or almost 20% more than we did, we collected in 2020. So, with that, that is the sales and use tax report finishing out 2021. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Barbara, any questions?
David.
You're lucky today.
Great. All right, and I think I have the next item. I'll stop sharing. The fourth quarter budget review for 2021. It's in your packet, along with a memo. I hope you've all had a chance to read it. Everything looks great for the year-end 2021. We are in full swing with the audit, so hoping to have that back to you soon. And I'll take any questions you may have with that.
Any other questions, if anyone? All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Youth Council, do you have any words for us today on what's going on?
Recently, we had a presentation given by two representatives from the Montrose High School, where we discussed putting into a system where we would create space...
Could you pull the mic up just a little closer?
An area or space for students who are going into college or out of high school to learn where they can go and how to sign up for colleges, as well as what work and jobs they can go to after school. Other than talking about that, we looked at current things that they're doing to help with college readiness and going into jobs and work after school as well. And it showed programs that offered internship opportunities and ICAP career planning. They also give exploration to students from 6th to 12th They also give exploration to students from 6th to 12th grade, promoting action and interaction with thinking about the future and striving to be proactive in the community. Some of the activities we're doing for the U-City Council in the future will be a clothing drive for used homelessness in Montrose, where we plan on gathering donations for clothes, clothes for young people preferably, and we hope to find an area where we can donate it to and disperse it into the community as well. We're also planning to do a River Bottom Cleanup Day during Earth Week, where we, as U-City Council, can all go out and help clean up along the riverside specifically. Also, on Earth Week, we plan to do a road cleaning, where we adopt a street and then clean up along that as a group. So the U-City Council will get together on a specific day, and we will all go out and gather trash bags to go collect trash. And that is all we have planned.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other staff comments? Bill, Ann? How about City Council comments? Good? Barbara?
Yeah, I'll just take a second. One of the other things that I do besides council is help organize the Wednesday Forum Program, and we didn't do them for a long time, but those are back in swing for any members of the community who want to attend. They're free at the Colorado Mesa University campus in the Cascade Room from 8:00 to 9:00 on Wednesdays. And tomorrow morning, John Washbush, the Montrose County Manager, will be giving an update on Montrose County.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
We do have one more staff update from Ross Valdez.
Ross?
Sorry, Ross.
No reason. Yeah, sorry, I should have jumped up right away. Just wanted to give you all a heads up that in collaboration with the Montrose Police Department, we're going to be having the Latinx Police Academy again in April. We had to reschedule from the series that we had planned for in December, but we are really excited to host the Latinx Police Academy here in April for April 12th, April 19th, and April 26th. We're going to be covering topics like interacting with the police, sexual abuse, and domestic violence, as well as mental health and drug use. At the event, we're going to be providing childcare, food, and interpretation, and we are hoping that our Latinx community will be able to join us. And in that same spirit, I'd like to provide that message in Spanish as well. And so, gracias consejo municipal de la ciudad de Montrose. No más quería informarle que estamos muy emocionados para proporcionar de nuevo nuestras prácticas con la policía. Infortunadamente, diríamos que cancelar este evento en diciembre, pero vamos a tener esa serie de cursos en abril. Y vamos a tener estos cursos el día 12, 19, y 26 de abril. Van a ser desde las 6:30 a las 8:30 de la noche en el edificio de Mada, que queda en la calle 17 Norte y la sexta calle de la ciudad de Montrose. Durante esta serie de cursos, vamos a hablar de varios temas. Los temas van a ser cómo interactuar con la policía, abuso sexual y violencia doméstica, salud mental y uso de drogas. En este evento vamos a tener cena, cuidado infantil, y también vamos a tener interpretación. Si quiere registrarse o necesita más información, puede hablar conmigo al 970-240-1471. And one thing I forgot to mention in English is that if anyone would like to register, they can register by calling me at 970-240-1471.
All right, Russ, they can find that information online also on the city website?
We are just getting ready to get the marketing materials out. We should be wrapping them up this week, though.
All right. Thank you. Chief, would you have any comments on an upcoming event on Saturday?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this Saturday, February 19th, starting at 10:00 a.m. and ending at 4:00 p.m., I will be hosting a local police hiring recruiting event. And so our community may have seen the sign boards placed around the community advertising this. We've done a big social media campaign here this last month, and we're really hoping for police recruits who are interested in becoming Montrose police officers to come out to the Montrose County Event Center. They'll get a tour of some of the equipment that we use. One of our vehicles will be out there, and probably the best part of it is that we'll have a large selection of our police officers there to discuss careers with the Montrose Police Department. We also have a section or a table set up where you can actually apply right then and there and actually go through the first step in the process, which is our integrity screening. If you do make it through that process towards the end of the day, we'll gather those potential recruits up, and I plan on hosting a tour of our police building, because I think that's just going to be a great recruiting tool for us. So happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Barbara? And Barbara and I are available to take that class. I mean, age is not going to be a problem, right?
Absolutely. No, age is absolutely not a problem, Mr. Mayor.
So if I apply, can I get past the whole running thing? Because then that'd be all right.
Why are you putting me on the spot? No, for you, sir, we'll do an extra 440.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, seeing that we have nothing else, I would take a motion to adjourn. We are finished for the night. Thank you.